Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 24th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Madam Kirk, the roll, please.
Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Sandra Jasonowski.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Sierra Messengers.
Excused.
Yep, thank you. And Robert Hawkins.
Here.
Thanks.
Okay, move on to the approval of the minutes. I know they came a little bit later, but any questions or concerns with those minutes from anybody? We can approve them tonight?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion approves our second.
Second.
Second from Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, on to old business. First item up here is ordinance 2025-38. This is an ordinance amending ordinance 2022-21. And so I'll have the utilities come forward and touch on this. This is also in second reading. This is amending the small general power electric rate schedule and amending the general terms and conditions of electric service. So Jeff Jacob.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is, as we discussed at the last meeting, this is more of a text cleanup. This is some historic language that had been in previous ordinances and has somehow fallen away. It in essence sets a ceiling and a floor for user categories. The small general power and what we generically refer to as the large power user at 49 kilowatts. In essence, what this does is it prohibits a customer from self-classifying as a small power user when they're using large power volume. And this in essence will encourage some conservation for those borderline users as well as protect the utility from a costly rate miscalculation or mischaracterization. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, this is establishing what has been in practice for a period of time.
Any questions or concerns for Jeff from City Council?
No, sir.
Okay, Rob, go ahead and highlights again for us.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2025-38 is an ordinance amending ordinance 2022-21 and the availability criteria under the small general power electric rate schedule and amending the general terms and conditions for electric service. So this, as Mr. Jacob indicated, this council is going to find that the availability provision in the small general power rate schedule adopted in ordinance 2022-21 is hereby amended to reflect the language set forth in Exhibit A, which we went through at the last meeting, and it's attached to this ordinance as reference. All their provisions, ordinance 2022-21, and the utility rate schedules, charges, and general terms and conditions not amended by this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. And the utility's general terms and conditions for electric service are hereby amended to include the new section 13.1 is set forth in Exhibit B, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption and remain effective unless amended or repealed by subsequent ordinance.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions, comments from council this time?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning ordinance 2025-38? Okay. Is there a motion from council?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-38.
Motion approves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you, council. All right, next up, we'll be, I guess this is kind of more of a Scrivener's error we're correcting here. It's on the agenda, it's 25-23, but really, I guess Tyler will explain what's going on with this one.
Right. So in, in August, we approved ordinance 2025-33, which should have been 2025-23. So in order to make the dates in running order, we're going to change this to 2023, which is what it is in the books.
So there's really, yeah.
Yeah, I think, Tanya, if I'm correct, this was the golf cart ordinance that was...
I've got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, an ordinance of the city of Lebanon amending ordinance 2018-09 to permit the use of golf carts on Lafayette Avenue.
So this was, again, it should have been assigned number 23. It was assigned number 23 in Tanya's book, but on the draft, it came up as 33. So obviously not a substantive change, it's more of just making sure that it's cleaned up and corrected. So we're essentially, it's a motion to amend the title of the ordinance.
Yeah, I would suggest it's a motion to amend the ordinance number from 2025-33 to 2025-23 as a Scrivener's error. As this council knows from the agenda, we're going to have a golf cart ordinance request in a separate ordinance here later this evening as well. So it's just making sure the historical reference is accurate.
That one's 44, so we didn't mess that one up.
I didn't look that far.
Any questions or concern with that from council? Okay, so do we have a motion to amend ordinance 2025-33 to correct the Scrivener's error and make it 2025-23 as was intended?
I'll make a motion that we amend ordinance 2025-33 to reflect ordinance 2025-23.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, apologies for that, council, and I think Tanya appreciates getting it corrected. So, all right, that concludes what I have for old business. Anything from council?
No.
All right, new business then. First item up are a couple food and beverage requests. First one up is from the YMCA, Kim Newman. John's in it.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the council and city staff. My name is Sean Kim, and I'm here tonight as a board member of the Withham Family YMCA, local business owner and resident here in Lebanon. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm here to ask for your support to make sure kids and families in Lebanon have a little extra joy this holiday season. Every year, the Withham Family YMCA hosts Breakfast with Santa. This year, the event will be held on Saturday, December 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Families come in, they're greeted with a hot breakfast, kids get to meet Santa and have the privilege of enjoying holiday activities where everyone can just relax and enjoy being together. For some families, this isn't just another holiday event. It may be the only place where they go where money isn't an issue, and the kids just get to experience the "I saw Santa" moment many of us got to experience. When they walk through the doors that morning, we don't ask if they're members. We don't ask about income. We just say, "We're glad you're here. Let's get you some breakfast. Would you like to meet Santa?" That's the heart of the YMCA's mission, building community, taking care of kids, and making sure people feel like they belong, especially during a time of year that can be really hard for families. To make this event truly accessible, we're requesting $1,500 from the Beverage and Food Fund to cover the cost of hot breakfast. The YMCA will provide Santa, the space, the staff, the volunteers, the planning. All that is on us. What we're asking from you is support so we can nourish the souls and not just feed the stomachs of those most in need. We are partnering with the local business, Brick Street Catering, to provide these meals so that way the funds, as well as the support they provide, remain here in Lebanon and Boone County. This isn't just funding for food for one morning. It's helping create memories for kids who talk about that time they had breakfast with Santa at the Y. It's helping struggling parents with an opportunity to sit down, breathe, and feel supported instead of stressed. On behalf of the Withham Family YMCA, we ask for your support for our request of $1,500 to sponsor the hot breakfast for our annual Breakfast with Santa. Thank you for your consideration.
Hey, John? Any comments from council?
Sandra? Yes, we did meet with, the committee did meet with Kim Newman, or Noonam, and we did agree that this cause is very worthy. It's a very wonderful cause. They're expecting, I think she said, between 100 to 150 people there. So, and they wanted to serve the hot breakfast to them. So with this, they also, they're doing the food in the gym, but they have all kinds of events for the kids. They have gifts, they have scavenger hunt, reindeer obstacle course, face painting, just to name a few of them. So they will be very busy that day, and the kids will have a wonderful time, the parents too, to be able to go to this at no cost. So we felt like it was a worthy cause, a wonderful cause, and we all approved it.
Any other comments, discussion from council?
Just one, and I don't know if he knows this or not. Original letter was written for $1,200, and she said they had 120 kids come through last year, and that $1,200 covered all of them. And she said they were expecting 150, so that's when we said, no, we should make it the full 1,500. So again, because it's a very worthy cause and it's excellent for the kids. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Is there a motion from council?
Yeah, I'm going to approve the $1,500 from the Food and Beverage Committee to the YMCA.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you, John. Good luck with your vote.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, next up is a request from the Capa Delta Phi Sorority.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Capa Delta Phi is requesting a donation from the Lebanon Food and Beverage Committee for the year 2025. Last year, we were able to help over 500 people with a Christmas meal through the generous help from the Lebanon Food and Beverage Committee. That was a very successful year. We had eight families sponsored out with Gamma Mu taking the largest of three families. We want to thank the committee and everyone that helped make last year a very successful year. Thank you.
Sandra?
And again, we met with Sue and Joyce, and they're providing the Christmas baskets. They have 21 members of this sorority that are all volunteer. Nobody's paid. They're packaging up all these baskets on the 13th of December. If anybody wants to volunteer, they could use the help, I'm sure. They're going to be handing those out on the 18th and 19th. And if there's any money left over, they always help with utilities and other things that the families need, so they don't keep anything. It goes back to the city, the community. So again, we all three agreed this was a wonderful cause again, and we're lucky to have these businesses and these groups that do want to help our community.
What's the recommendation amount?
The Beverage Committee gives $1,500 to the sorority Capa Delta Phi.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I make that motion.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Second from Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you for all you do for our community this time of year.
Thank you.
Might make note that this is their 87th year of doing this function for our citizens of Lebanon and Indiana. Thank you, Sue.
But Sue's not 87 years old.
Many hands. All right, next up here will be Resolution 2025-35. This is an amendment of an economic revitalization area. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is a supplement to what was before you last year for Project Domino. It is one of the process, Project Domino or Meta has acquired some additional parcels, four parcels. This is a two-step process. This resolution's the first step, supplementing the economic revitalization area that this council approved last year. And I'll go ahead and go through this resolution, but again, it's a two-step process, public hearing at the next meeting for consideration. And again, it's essentially addressing these four parcels that have been annexed into the city and have been acquired by Meta, so.
This is the first reading?
Well, this is a resolution that would, after, we need a motion to enact on it, but before, to be effective, it's a two-step process, be a public hearing, and then there'll be another resolution.
There's another resolution.
That's the confirmatory process. So again, Resolution 2025-35 is a resolution for this council regarding the supplement of an economic revitalization area. This council has indicated previously adopted Resolution 2024-23 on October 18th, 2024, and confirmed Resolution 2025-36 on November 25th, 2024. That's defined in this resolution as the original resolution, and that was following a public hearing, and it designated certain parcels identified as the original economic revitalization area, and that's set forth in Exhibit B, and it's defined as the original ERA. Subsequent to the adoption of the original resolution, certain land was excluded from the original ERA, and that's also identified in Exhibit B as the new parcels. These parcels have been annexed into the city, defined as the annexed area, and the council in the city desired to include the annexed area within the original ERA. This council wishes to encourage the development of the original ERA in the annexed area, which together contain approximately 1,437 acres of real property located within the Leep District and which is described in Exhibit A. Council believes its designation of the annexed area as an ERA pursuant to Indiana law will assist in the city's goals of fostering new business within the Leep District, increase and diversify the city's tax base, and promote the creation of high-paying job opportunities for city residents. This council finds that the annexed area meets the criteria for designation as an ERA, being characterized by significant underutilization, deterioration, and lack of development potential without targeted incentives. The annexed area is located within the Leep Plan Unit Development and will remain subject to all the requirements set forth. Then, this council's adoption of this Resolution 2025-35 is intended to serve as the fulfillment of its declaratory resolution requirements provided by Indiana law. So this council finds that pursuant to Indiana law, it declares that the annexed area is designated as an ERA pursuant to Indiana law. The designation of the annexed area as an ERA shall not be limited by a certain time period, and upon passage of a confirmatory resolution, all qualifying rural and personal properties shall be eligible for deduction as allowed under Indiana law and as approved by this council. This council reaffirms the establishment of the original ERA as contemplated in the original resolution, and this resolution is intended to supplement the original ERA to include the annexed area. In accordance with Indiana law, this council shall cause to be published notice of adoption of this resolution. In accordance with Indiana law, this council shall cause to be filed certified copy of this resolution with the Boone County Assessor, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption. And again, as indicated, if the council would approve this, then there would be notice of a public hearing, and then the second step would be a confirmatory resolution.
Thank you, Rob. And again, just to clarify layman's terms, there's already an ERA there now. In the time of when it was adopted, there were additional parcels that were annexed into the city that were then, that are contiguous and adjacent on their current site. So it's a matter of, it's really more of an administrative cleanup for this to make sure that everything that's actually officially in the city on the site where they're building it is in this ERA to make sure we can make sure we can capture the tiff from it, essentially. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there any public comment concerning Resolution 2025-35? Please state your name, address, and keep comments to three minutes if possible.
Jody Stewart, Lebanon. I just want to make the council aware that I did ask to be requested to put on the agenda tonight, and that request was denied. However, the mayor did offer to allow me to come in and read this notice personally to him, but this notice I feel like is meant for everyone to hear, so I'm going to start reading that. Please let me know when my three minutes are up, and then the next person will get up, since you would not allow that. Judicial notice of the people's supreme authority to regulate commerce for their well-being and public good. Notice to agent is notice to principal, and notice to principal is notice to agent. I, Jody Stewart, one of the people, as seen in the 50 state constitutions, Republican informed sui juris, do serve you this notice by necessity that you do provide immediate due care. Please take notice that all trustees and servants in government, in handling any of the people's public business, are obligated to provide the people the process of law that they are due, which is based upon settled maximums. Process of law, when government trustees and servants are given due notice, they are obligated to provide due care, or else it is a deprivation of the people's rights to receive remedy and redress of grievances and injury. Definitions from Black Law Dictionary, first edition, "due" is owed, just, proper, regular, lawful, sufficient, as in the phrases "due care," "due process of law," "due notice." Due process of law means such an exercise of powers of government as settled maximums of law permit and sanctioning under such safeguards for the protection of the individual rights as those maximums prescribe. Notice, knowledge, information, the result of observation, information of an act to be done or required to be done. Due care, just, proper, and sufficient care. The absence of negligence. Negligence, the opposite of care. And prudence, the omission to use the means reasonably necessary to avoid injury to others. Maxim, a principle of law universally admitted as being a correct statement of the law or as agreeable to natural reason, a proposition to be all men, confessed and granted without proof, argument, or discourse. Maximum of law, one lawfully commanding must be obeyed. Maximum of law, law is a rule of right, and whatever is contrary to the rule of right is an injury. And please take further notice, the constitutional rights or common rights cannot be interfered with by government, and that they have their foundation in the common law and fundamental principles preceding the founding of America that were used as the foundation for constitutions. In a constitutional republic, the government has jurisdiction over public uses, including the regulation of commerce. Where the people have the supreme authority and the process of law that the people are due is the right to determine what commerce is for their well-being and public good. The authority does not lie with the government. It lies with the body of the people.
That's three minutes, Jody.
Thank you. Can I ask a question? Is what you're reading, the document you're reading, are those the same as the emails that we've all been getting? Yes, they are. We like to read them into public record because this is public comment time, and this is videotaped.
My name is Danielle Whitlock. I'm going to pick up where she left off. Constitutional right is a right guaranteed to the citizens by the Constitution, and so guaranteed as to prevent legislative interference therewith. Blacks Law Dictionary, third edition. Indiana Constitution, Article 1, Section 1, we declare that all power is inherent in the people, and that all free governments are and of right ought to be founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and well-being. Indiana Constitution, Article 1, Section 31, no law shall restrain any of the inhabitants of the state from assembling together in a peaceable manner to consult for their common good. Two Treatises of Civil Government, Section 242, Chapter 14, Book 2, by John Locke, if a controversy arise where the law is silent or doubtful, and the thing be of great consequence, I should think the proper umpire in such a case should be the body of the people. And please take further notice that regarding public use of land, modern arbitrary enactments by legislatures which are opposed to common law, lack due process of law, and are used to bypass the people's right to determine what commerce is for their well-being and public good through the zoning of land by local legislative bodies or permitting uses via administrative boards, such as area plant commissions and board zoning appeals. In Section, in Sec versus Jarski 603, 2024, the Supreme Court made this clear when it quoted Murray's Lessie versus Hoboken Land and Improvement Company, 59, U.S. 272, 1856, and said that the baseline established in the Constitution was designed as a restraint for the legislative branch from making any process due process of law by its mere will. Definitions from Black Law's Dictionary, first edition, law arbitrary, opposed to immutable, a law not founded in the nature of things but imposed by the mere will of the legislature. Common law, as distinguished from law created by the enactment of legislators, it is a body of rules, written or unwritten, which are of fixed and immutable authority, which derive their authority solely from usages and customs of immemorial antiquity or from the judgments and decrees of the courts, recognizing, affirming, and enforcing such usages and customs. And please take further notice that the use of public money for economic development or commerce does not pursue any grant of constitutional authority, because federal, state, nor any government can contract against the people's rights by providing public money or financial incentives that are used in contracts with entities in commerce. In such situations, the law is not silent or doubtful, where the body of the people may exercise their right to determine what commerce is for their well-being and public good, because there is simply no constitutional authority to proceed with the commerce or economic development when public money or financial incentives are involved.
Just three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Marshall Whitlock, 2065, South State Rule 280 West. Loan Association versus Topica, 87, U.S. 655. From 1874, the right of taxation can only be used in aid of public object with which in purpose, within this purpose for which governments are established, it cannot therefore be exercised in aid of veteran enterprises, strictly private, the benefit of individuals. Through a remote way, the public may be benefited thereby. The right to contract must be limited by the right to tax, and if in this given case, no tax can be lawfully be levied. The contract itself is void for want of authority to make it. The validity of a contract which can only be fulfilled by a resort to taxation depends on the power to levy the tax for that purpose. Maximum of law, commerce ought to be common and not be converted into a monopoly, and the private gain of few. Please take notice that this is my Please take notice that this is my wish, order, and demand that you provide remedy by immediately ceasing and assisting all activity related to any economic development or commerce, including the use of any public money or financial incentives that are used in these contracts with entities in commerce or that use of modern legislative processes by the bypass the people's rights to determine what the commerce is for their well-being and public good. If you believe that the government has been granted power to contract with entities in commerce using public money or financial incentives, or use modern legislative processes to bypass the people's right to determine what is commerce is for the well-being and public good, please respond with the constitutional grants of authority, or if you agree that this practice is unlawful, furthermore, please respond if you disagree of any claims within this notice. Our responses responses shall be made within five days restricted to this notice by sworn affidavit, point by point, under penalty of perjury, or you agree by a tacit acquittance to all claims hearing, and this shall stand as evidence against you in all courts of records, and that no court may rehear this matter, that this matter may be heard by an arbitrator of my choice, but at your expense, and that if this remedy as instructed is not given the people to whom you swore an oath, will recognize it as being done purposely with full knowledge, malice, and intent. All responses not sworn under penalty of perjury are considered nonresponses. This notice is sent in peace, love, and Jesus Christ that you provide due care to those who hold all the power, the people. Simon Marshall Whitlock. Also, I'd like to tell each and every one of you, including you, mayor, that I apologize for getting up here and being so rude last time. I did not realize there was eight, three minute limit, so I apologize to each and every one of you, okay?
Appreciate that.
Well, I'm just trying to take my time, be polite to you, okay? Because I was out of line. I did not know there was a time limit, okay? So please accept my apologies for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Any further public comment concerning Resolution 2025-35? Seeing none, any further discussion, comments from council?
Make a motion we approve Resolution 2025-35.
We have motion to approve, there are second. Second from Dick, on fair side.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is Sandra's post. All right, next up, the Resolution 2025-36. This is additional appropriation concerning Love and Fire Department equipment. Chief Bats.
Good evening, everyone. These funds represent the sale of our year 2000 GMC Topkick. We sold this through Enterprise. It was Mr. Stoner handled everything, and these funds were put back into the general fund, and we are requesting them to be appropriated, and we are going to purchase an enclosed trailer for our technical rescue division.
Questions for chief from the council?
No, sir.
Tanya, do you mind reading that resolution? Thank you. Thirty-six.
Resolution 2025-36, whereas the city of Lebanon is duly formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana. It is duly, it is the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances of the city. It has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require a public hearing, of which the council has served proper notice in accordance with IC Code 5-3-1. Resolution is to appropriate funds for fire miscellaneous equipment line out of 1101, which is the general fund, for $9,175.
Thank you, Tanya. At this time, then I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-36. Any public comments? Please come forward. State your name for the record and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing no sudden movements, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-36. Any discussion, comments from council?
No.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion. We approve Resolution 2025-36.
Motion to approve, there are second.
Second.
Second from Rob, on fair side.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved, the council. All right, next up, chief, you're still there, 2025-37.
These funds represent two projects. One is $35,000 to represent the purchase of the equipment for the trench rescue program and the structure collapse program. We will use our non-reverting line and an amount of $30,000 for a total of $65,000 to purchase the equipment. The other half of this additional is to facilitate the purchase of Squad 211. Squad 211, and I shared pictures of Squad 211 with you today, is going to be used to offload some of the medical run load on ladder 213, as well as be used in our technical rescue division. The F-450 chassis was purchased locally through Jean-Luc Ford, oh, excuse me, D. Patrick Ford, Habit, and then the chassis was sent to McGinley Fire Apparatus here locally to have an aluminum box put on it, and this will facilitate the final funds needed for its completion.
Questions for chief from the council? Chief, to clarify to you, where does your non-reverting line come from?
Plan review.
So there's a small fee that people pay. Tanya, mind reading that for us, please?
Resolution 2025-37, whereas the city of Lebanon is a duly formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana. At times, it becomes necessary to appropriate additional funds within the approved budget as contemplated and authorized under Indiana code. It has been determined it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require a public hearing, of which the council has served proper notice. Is to appropriate funds, so 25-37 is to appropriate funds for the fire trench rescue, and that fund is 2240, which comes from the Lit Fire Fund, in the amount of $157,579.
Thank you, Tanya. Any questions, comments from council? It's been read.
You brought this up to us last year, at the end of the year, I thought sometime during that time, didn't you, about that you were going to be asking for this when we were doing the budgets?
I'm having a little trouble here.
You brought this up before, prior, that...
Yes, this was brought up last year, that it would be coming down the pipe, and we wanted to be run ready January 1, 2026.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, this project's about two years old now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just didn't put in the full budget last year, just based on how tight it was, so we...
And that's where I was going.
We knew this was coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, obviously, it's coming, it's getting ready to be delivered, you know, we're doing all the other appropriations to be done to make it sure it's ready, so now it's just a matter of...
We knew we'd be back for this.
Correct, yes, it's not, should not be a surprise to anybody. Any other questions or comments? Okay, at this time, then, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-37. If you need public comment, please come forward. State your name, address, for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing no sudden movements, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-37. Any final comments from council?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-37.
Motion approved from Rob, second from Keith, all in fair side.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, next up, this is ordinance 2025-39. This is an amendment to Chapter 76 of traffic schedules to city code. This is concerning a three-way stop at John Bart Road and Fordice Street.
Thank you very much, good evening. This is, this ordinance, ordinance 2025-39, is to add a, another three-way stop to our traffic schedule that gives then our public safety officers the ability to enforce that three-way stop. So this is at the intersection of John Bart Road and Fordice Road. Currently, only the Fordice Road traffic stops at that location. This request comes to us in part at the request of the school corporation, who feel as though kids crossing at that crosswalk, going to the new central elementary, would be better served if traffic always were to stop and to slow down at that intersection. So that's why we're bringing this before you tonight. Not done a warrant analysis of that intersection, but I would say, without getting way into the weeds of all the options that you go into in a warrant analysis, essentially, you, the easy way to do this is that if you have over 500 cars go through an intersection in a peak hour, then a stop sign is warranted. With the fact that the school drop-off goes to the entrance off of John Bart Road, in addition that the school bus garage is also now on John Bart Road, I think it would easily meet that analysis criteria, but we have not done that analysis. But as I said, this was a request brought to us by the school corporation that I personally support and think is in the interest of the safety of the children walking to the school.
Just to clarify to you, a warrant analysis isn't required for us to adopt the resolution or the ordinance.
One of the criteria in a warranted analysis is that whatever the warrant analysis numbers may be, they can be overwritten by the city entity.
Any questions for Kevin? Obviously, people that in that area makes a lot of sense. Certainly, it's a long, straight road. I may be a little guilty myself of going maybe the 20 miles an hour is very slow, or 30, it's very slow there. So a stop sign there is probably not a bad idea either, so, Dick.
I'd just like to comment that when we passed the other one, I mentioned this intersection, thinking that we ought to do the same thing, so, and I totally agree, we ought to take care of it and get it done. Also because of the original sidewalk coming across Morningside there, and it's a Morningside.
Yes.
Cross the ombard over, across Fordice, and I think it'd just, just be more safer to have a, up there now and get it out of the way and get it done, and just make it safer around the school.
And if the council should so choose to accept and approve this ordinance, I might ask that you consider waiving your rules and go ahead and read this on second reading and take action this evening, so that we can expedite the process.
Any other final comments, questions, concerns? Before we have a, whether we want to consider going to second reading or not, I'll see if there's any public comment concerning ordinance 2025-39. Again, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Everybody likes it? Thumbs up? Yeah, yeah. Police in the back, thumbs up, okay? All right, we're good. All right, now, Rob, you want to read it, please?
Thank you, mayor. Council ordinance 2025-39 is an ordinance of this council concerning amendment to Chapter 76, traffic schedules. Pursuant to Indiana code, it provides that a municipality is allowed to regulate motor vehicle traffic within its corporate boundaries. This council has jurisdiction over the public thoroughfares and streets within the corporate boundaries of the city. This council finds as follows, as of the effective date of this ordinance, Chapter 76, Schedule 5, stop intersections of the city code of ordinance shall be amended to include the following, John Bart Road and Fordice Road, three-way stop. The remaining portions of Chapter 76 of the city code ordinance are not affected by this ordinance and shall remain in full force and effect.
Thank you, Rob. It's been read on first reading. Are there any concerns or questions why we shouldn't take it to second reading tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Again, if we do want to move to second reading, there has to be unanimous consent from the council, so at this time, is there a motion to suspend the rules and take it to second reading?
I make a motion we suspend the rules.
We have motion to suspend, and a second from Sandra, all in fair side.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our rules are currently suspended. We will move ordinance 2025-39 to second reading. Any further comments from council or additional public comment? Okay, is there a motion concerning ordinance 2025-39?
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance 2025-39.
We have motion to approve, there are second.
I'll second.
Second from Sandra, all in fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved, thank you, council, and thank you, Kevin. Okay, next up here will be ordinance 2025-40. This is concerning pilot payments within the Leap District. This is on first reading. Jeff Jacob.
Good evening again, council. Thank you, mayor. I'm here tonight with Sandra and Ed. Just to set the table, as you're all aware, Indiana has a payment in lieu of taxes statute, and that is in essence a vehicle where tax-exempt entities make a comparable property tax statutory payment to the city for real and real property and infrastructure it has within the corporate limits. And this helps in essence cover public services in those areas to the extent that not-for-profit, in this case, the utility utilizes the services, roads, et cetera. Lebanon Utilities has for, as far back as I can remember, made an annual pilot payment to the city. And the, you also recall, and this is where the rub comes in, that we established two rate districts, water and wastewater, for the civil district and for the Leap District. Because of the speed of the infrastructure that has been installed in the, and is being installed in the Leap District, and the need for the users within the Leap District to catch up, the utility does not have the funds to pay a pilot payment to the city in the Leap District. And we do not want to burden our civil rate district customers with that payment. We've worked very hard at the utility board and city councils' aid to isolate those two districts. And accordingly, we are asking that the pilot payment in the Leap District be waived until the bonds are paid off. Sandra, who's doing the heavy lifting, is here and kind of wants to show you what we're talking about and why we're making this request.
Good afternoon, and I'm a very visual person, so I really just kind of wanted to give you guys a visual of the reason we really can't afford to pay the Leap pilot payments. And I have a paper here that I hope you can see. And every year, in April, May timeframe, the utilities looks at our year-end financials for the prior year, and that's how we come up with the Leap payment. And it's a pretty simple calculation, we do it for every utility, but what I'm showing you here is a combination of all of our utilities at the end of 2024. So the value, or the way Leap is, or the pilot is calculated, sorry about that, is it takes our net utility, plant, and service, and that includes any construction in progress. And then it subtracts out the depreciation, and then we apply the tax rate to that. So you can see, we had about $95 million in net assets at the end of 2024, which made our pilot payment this year 754,000. In comparison, if we look at how fast Leap is going up, so you can see the 2025 actual, that 754 I just talked about, but we're putting in approximately $225 million in assets on water Leap and 378 million on the wastewater Leap. And we only have two customers right now, one is a minimum customer, and one of them is construction water. So as fast as that's going in the ground, those assets, there's no possible way from Leap we would be able to make those payments, which is why we're asking for a waiver from Leap at this time.
Happy to answer any questions. The one point I do want to make clear is what we're not asking for is any relief in the civil district as we've done in the past. This is simply for the Leap District until, it'll be a number of years, but until the bonds are paid off, so...
What's, what's length of the bonds?
I'm sorry?
What is the length of the bonds?
I believe 25 years, is that correct?
Twenty or 25 years, yes.
Yeah. That's the, and that's the maximum, but if there's additional revenues that come off of them, those get applied to the bonds and paid them down faster as well.
Correct.
Yeah. So essentially, to avoid a situation where the civil rate customers are, essentially have to make up the difference of the pilot payments, I think it makes sense for so, to waive it for the, while the bonds are outstanding on the Leap District, to make sure that we're not trying to move, or not subsidizing, we're not, we're not costing current rate payers to pay a pilot payment to pay it back to the city.
But we, we said before that the civil district didn't ever have to pay for Leap.
Exactly, and that's what, that's, this is, this will help ensure that.
But it sounds like if we don't, they will.
Well, do you want to get into some of that, Jeff, on...
Yeah, so...
I need more clarification here because I just don't understand this.
Yeah, so unless the Leap District pilot payment is waived, you are correct that the utility would have to borrow from the civil rate district side in order to attempt to make the Leap District pilot payment to the city. We don't want to do that, we want to ensure that it doesn't happen, and as a matter of fact, if you play this out, the utility would not have the funds to do that. So what we are asking... So what we are asking for is relief in the LEAP district only so that we don't have that, so we've got that continued wall set up where we're not drawing from the civil side of things. So you're absolutely correct. We are trying to ensure that that protection for our civil rate customers is there.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to add real quick. The way the ordinance is written now, it's for the water utility, it's for all the utilities. And regardless of LEAP, we still only have one water utility and one wastewater utility, which is why we want to separate out that LEAP territory.
Any other question, Sandra? Makes sense? No? That makes sense, or no? Can we?
It's already separated, and that we were assuring the citizens that there was no extra coming from them.
Yeah, those have been separated in terms of a rate district. So we have a LEAP and civil water and wastewater districts. This is really a separate issue under the pilot statute that the Utility Board and Sandra have become aware of, that we want to make sure that we are continuing that isolation, and that's why we're asking the City Council to take this step, to continue that separation between the districts.
The bonds are separated also.
Yeah, and the, yeah.
Yeah, so we have separate rate structures, but we still have one Lebanon Utilities, right? And Lebanon Utilities, by ordinance that we've adopted at the City Council, they pay pilot or payment in lieu of taxes. If they were a private entity, they would pay taxes on all of their infrastructure.
They.
Utilities.
Okay.
So they pay us the pilot payment. We set that, we, that, we set that by, by local ordinance, that pilot payment, and then it's based on our, what our city property tax rate is. Okay? So because of the hundreds of millions of dollars in infrastructure costs that are, that are being built in the LEAP district right now, and in the LEAP user, you know, the territory, they, as the Lebanon Utilities, owes us money because of they, they pay it on the construction, they essentially owe us property taxes for it. This essentially saying, all of that LEAP infrastructure, which is being, you know, partially funded by the state as well, too, we're not going to count that against them. And so we, they don't have to pay that pilot payment just on that LEAP property, property, if that makes sense. And so if we don't adopt this, they will have to pay property taxes, pilot payments, on the entire system, including what's in the LEAP district, too. And so there won't be enough money in the LEAP district to pay that, Lebanon's utilities, by our ordinances, required to pay us the pilot payment. So they have to take it from somewhere. So they probably have to borrow money from themselves of their own utilities to pay us, but also it's a large number, so therefore it wouldn't be able to do that. So waiving the pilot on the LEAP is how we avoid impacting current rate payers.
Do we have to waive it until the bonds are paid? I mean, can we do a shorter period?
He, I mean.
Yeah, I'll let Sandra tackle this, but certainly at any, right now, we felt like the safest play until this is beginning to mature and we're seeing funds come in. We felt like that until the bond maturity, that this was the best way to do it. Certainly, the City Council could revisit that issue at any time and amend the ordinance at any time in the future. We thought this was the easier, easier methodology. So would you?
Yeah, I would agree with that. And to go a little further, we have protected the civil side on everything we've done. This is, I think, I hope, the final thing that crops up that we didn't notice, but the, on the bonds, the civil is protected. But I'm going to put this sheet back up and show you, I didn't take the time earlier. But if you look over the next five years, the LEAP, the pilot payments on the construction, and this would be prior to any major customers, is going to be sitting around $4 million. That's why we're asking for the relief. I think it's going to be quite a bit of time before we have enough in the operating expenses to cover that. I'll also tell you that the rate that was built for LEAP does not include any pilot payments. So at some point, if we do visit this in the future, we'll also have to revisit the LEAP rate. And currently, that would be a substantial rate increase in LEAP to be able to cover this.
Yes, I just don't understand why we didn't budget this in the beginning, like you did everything else, how, why it's hitting us now.
So, so part of that'll go back to the creation of the rate. When we created the LEAP rate, if they would have embedded this into that, keep in mind, we have no customers. So while we're putting in $200 million worth of assets into the ground, two, three, four years before we have any customers, we start paying this payment in lieu of tax regardless of the customers. So while this line is being built, we would have to pay this payment in lieu of tax unless it's waived.
Well, I agree with the plan because we're helping the utilities, which we are one family.
Yes.
And we're helping the utilities build the infrastructure, and we will eventually be receiving more pilot money in the future.
Absolutely.
Any further comments, questions?
No, sir.
Okay. There was, in Section 2, I was reviewing it again, and there was some language changes I wanted to propose to the council. It currently reads, upon full repayment of the bonds funding the utility infrastructure servicing the LEAP district, the common council shall evaluate whether to reinstate pilot payments for the LEAP district. I wanted to tweak that and essentially make it, instead of making it a, a shall evaluate, make, essentially make it a mandatory, so shall be collected. Essentially, the wording would say, upon full repayment of the bonds funding the utility infrastructure servicing the LEAP district, the pilot payment for LEAP district shall be collected. So essentially codifies that instead of us reevaluating it, it actually will be. But again, to the, as a discussion earlier, we still have the, we set these pilot payments in ordinance, so we could change that at any point if we wanted to make that. If there were, if we saw that they were paying it back faster, and we felt there was, we wanted to say, hey, we want to have something, we obviously could amend that at that point. But that's a legislative decision to do that. But I wanted to clarify that it's not a shall evaluate, it's actually a definitive, shall be collected, just to clarify that. Any concern, questions with that tweak there? Have a motion to amend that as proposed?
I'll make a motion, we approve the amendment.
Yeah.
That you recommended to Section 2.
Yep.
In the ordinance.
Motion and a second, all in favor of the amendment. Say aye.
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 Disposed? Okay, that is now amended. So, Rob, do you mind reading ordinance 2025-39, or 40, excuse me, as amended?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2025-40 is an ordinance of this council regarding payment in lieu of taxes or defined as pilot from the city of Lebanon Utilities and repealing Resolution Indiana law, and the Indiana Code authorizes this body to adopt an ordinance requiring a municipally-owned utility to make a payment in lieu of taxes or the pilot to the municipality's general fund. Resolution 2010-07 previously established the utility's obligation to make the pilot payments to the city's general fund. That's defined as the original pilot resolution. And now desires to repeal the original pilot resolution and establish in Section 3 below the utility's obligation to make pilot payments to the city's general fund. City has approved for development the LEAP district. In light of creation of LEAP district, the city's established the civil water district and the civil wastewater district, as well as the LEAP water district and the LEAP wastewater district for purposes of infrastructure development, service, delivery, and distinguishing the respective rates and charges. As was described earlier, due to the speed at which infrastructure servicing the LEAP district has been installed in relation to the buildup for end-users, this council has determined that it's not financially feasible for the utility to pay the pilot to the city for the LEAP district water and wastewater infrastructure until the utility receive payments for the bonds funding that infrastructure, since support in ordinances 2024-35 and 2025-12. The Utility Service Board has recommended to this council to waive the pilot payments by the utility for the LEAP water and wastewater districts only while continuing all other pilot payments made by the utility as established by this ordinance, and to clarify the city's intention to continue receiving such payments based upon the rates, charges, and assess utility property value within the civil water and wastewater districts as if such property were privately owned. So therefore, this council finds as follows. Waiver the pilot for the LEAP districts. The city of Lebanon hereby waives the requirement under the original pilot resolution requiring the utility to make any pilot payment derived from the rates and charges of the LEAP water and LEAP wastewater districts only, effective immediately upon passage of this ordinance. All other pilot payments made by the utility described in Section 3 below, including electric and telecommunications, shall be made pursuant to this ordinance and remain unaffected by the waiver pilot for LEAP water and LEAP wastewater districts described in this section. Upon full payment of the bonds funding the utility infrastructure servicing the LEAP district, the pilot payments for the LEAP district shall be collected. Section 3, this council elects to receive the pilot payments from the utility under this ordinance, except as waived in Section 1 above, and the utility shall make all such pilot payments, including electric telecommunications from the civil water and civil wastewater districts to the city's general fund in an amount calculated to be equivalent to the property taxes that would be payable if the respective utility property were owned by a private taxable entity. Section 4, the pilot payments described in Section 3 shall be transferred annually to the city of Lebanon General Fund and shall be derived exclusively from the rates and charges applicable to the respective divisions or districts from which they are made. Section 5, the original pilot resolution of this council is hereby repealed and declared to be of no further force in effect. This ordinance shall be effected upon passage by this council and is, and is under Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance 2025-40 is in round of first reading. Any final comments, discussion from council? Any public comment concerning Resolution 2025-40?
So council, I would like to make you aware that what you are being asked to do right now was specifically noted in this notice. You have the right to regulate commerce. You do not have the right to create it. The LEAP district was created by our legislators. That was against our rights. Now you are being asked to extend payments for commerce that has been created. Read the notice, that's what it's there for. It's a teaching tool for you guys. I don't want you to see you get in trouble.
To clarify, there's, we're not, we're waiving a payment from the utilities to the city. It's, we're not giving money to anybody. We're waiving what would have, what is due to the city based on our current ordinances now, pilot payments. It's, it's, it's not giving money to the utilities. It's saying, because of the unique circumstance with the massive amount of infrastructure that is being installed, we're not collecting the pilot payments on this at this time, just to clarify that. Any further public comment? With that, ordinance 2025-40 will be taken up at second reading at our next meeting, which will be December 8th at 7:15 p.m. Okay, next item up here will be ordinance 2025-41. This is a designated outdoor refreshment area for consideration by the City Council. This is also on first reading. Rob and Missy Krulik. Hi, Missy, if you want to start the presentation?
Missy Krulik with the heart of Lebanon. As you know, we were here last June, beginning of June, to do a presentation on DORA. And I know you see in the audience much of the people that were here in June. So what we're doing is a designated outdoor refreshment area. These are specific zones where adults aged 21 and over can purchase alcoholic beverages from approved vendors and consume them in outdoors within defined boundaries. And then you'll, you'll notice that our proposed DORA days and hours are pretty conservative, probably the most conservative DORA ordinance I've seen. It's Thursday and Friday, 5 p.m. to 10 p.m., Saturday, noon to 10 p.m. And then we've also limited it to just one drink allowed per person at a time. Most designated outdoor refreshment area ordinances allow two. We've done no, and with a DORA, there's no outside alcohol permitted within the DORA boundaries, and no carryout alcohol beverages. All carryout alcohol beverages must remain sealed and cannot be consumed within the DORA district. And then we've also noted for the bright-colored DORA cups. Since our last meeting, we've had, we've collected a few more surveys. We have 117 total surveys. Every one of those surveys was in favor, strongly in favor, neutral. We only had one survey come back as strongly opposed. So tonight, just preparing that first reading for the DORA district.
Questions for Missy at this time?
I would just say that I was invited to participate in DORA in Noblesville, and we spent a couple hours walking the streets and seeing all the different events and things, and it seemed to be handled very well. They had great signage, they had trash containers for the plastic cups, they had separation of garbage or plastic cups and things like that. All the people, all the places we went into were very receptive of us coming in and walking around. So when I was there in Noblesville, it seemed to go very, very well.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, let Rob read it, and then a public comment.
Good, Rob. Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2025-41 is an ordinance of this council establishing a designated outdoor refreshment area known as DORA. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the city may establish one or more designated outdoor refreshments areas, again, that's defined as DORA, for the purposes of permitting a person to exit the license premise of a designated permittee or bend door with not more than two open containers of alcoholic beverages at a time and consume alcoholic beverages within a DORA. Again, that's a defined term. This is several pages, so I'm going to go through and just really hit the highlights. But this council would find as follows, all definitions under the act shall apply to this ordinances and shall be incorporated herein. The total number of designated outdoor refreshment areas is in Section 2, and this council does hereby authorize establishment of a DORA with the potential to establish a total of seven doors in and throughout the city as allowed by law. Revocation of a designated outdoor refreshment areas in Section 3, at any time the city may amend or revoke or alter the DORA. Section 4 is defined as the Lebanon Downtown Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area, and that's depicted in your map on Exhibit A. And that's defined as the Lebanon Downtown DORA, and it sets forth the boundaries there. The Lebanon Downtown DORA and all subsequently adopted and established DORAs are collectively referred in this ordinance as DORA. And again, the map's in Exhibit A. Section 5 talks about compliance with the zoning ordinance, and it's consistent with the city's Lebanon Unified Development Ordinance. Section 6 discusses the DORA logo, logo and signage, that's in Exhibit B, and you've seen copies and what that looks like. Section 7, again, is the DORA district boundary signage that Missy Krulik discussed. That's, again, the maps in Exhibit A for you. The hours, as Missy indicated, described in Section 4A, shall be in effect Thursday through Friday from 5 p.m. to 10 p.m. Saturday, 12 p.m. to 10 p.m. prevailing local time. Section 9 discusses a designated permittee, and that's defined in Indiana law. Once approved by the city, applications shall be sent to the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commissions, or the IATC, for the commission's approval. So this is just the first step. It has to go to the IATC for subsequent approval. those for KD Chop House LLC or DBA 1830 Chop House, Boone County Cake Company, 1205 Distillery or DBA Four Finger Distillery, and Clues Brews LLC or DBA Clues Brews. And additional license premises, not listed in this ordinance and located within the downtown DORA, there's a process which they could apply, and then we would be back and start this process essentially all over. Section 11 discusses the vendors and what they're required to do to be authorized. Section 12, again, discusses signage requirements, and that's also set forth in the Exhibit B. And then section 13 talks about right of refusal. Section 14 talks about permitted amounts, as Missy indicated, the statute allows two, and this ordinance is only allowing one open container at a time. Section 15 talks about authorized containers and what the, how those will be described. Section 16 discusses outdoor dining exceptions. Section 17 discusses carryout businesses. 18 is a prohibition of outside beverages. And then some additional legal requirements that we've seen in other ordinance are severability, and then this ordinance shall be in full force in effect, subject to Indiana law, as well as the approval of the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission.
Thank you, Rob. Now that that has been read, any comments, concerns, or questions from council?
Can I get a copy of that ordinance that you just read and Exhibit A? Because I didn't have anything on it, so.
Was it included in your packet?
Yep. I didn't have it in mine. I don't know if the email just didn't bring through the attachments or what. I looked. I didn't have any attachments on my stuff today. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, concerns? Any public comment?
I have a question. How many drinks? You said a two.
One. No, state law allows two. This is one. Yeah, and then also no outdoor beverages are permitted either. So you couldn't have one glass and then refill it. That would be illegal. Yeah, it's defined in the ordinance. It goes, includes Main Street down to the Boone County Cake Company, but it's section... Yeah, there's the map. Missy, do you have the map with you?
Yeah, I do.
You might throw it up there for me?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. It's kind of the hash markers. Yeah, thank you.
Down Main Street to include Boone County Cake Company and Just Us wanted to be included in the DORA district. And then also to note, we did get letters of support from both of the churches in the district.
So they're going to be in it too?
The churches, yes. Central Christian Church, we got a letter from them, and then also First Presbyterian Church, we got a letter from them.
Well, they're not going to be in it. They're just saying it's okay.
Oh, they're in the district. They're in the district.
Why are we so excited about moving forward with all this drinking? Every, it seems like every event we have, there's so much drinking, and I don't know why we can't come up with something else other than drinking outside in the open. And are there any restrictions, like the courthouse lawn, the courthouse, the concrete there, where people cannot be sitting on that or walking on the courthouse lawn? Is that restricted area? Because I don't want to see people drinking and running around the courthouse lawn in the evening.
Right. I think, I think, Sandra, you'll find in these DORA districts, it's more of an experience and less of a drinking event. It's more about going into a restaurant that may have a waiting list. You want a glass of wine, and while you're having that glass of wine, you get to walk out and you get to linger longer a little bit in downtown, and you get to see what's available. If a retail establishment is open and they allow you to come in with that drink, then you can go inside that establishment, look around, do a little shopping, and then come back out. It's, I think you'll find in what I've experienced with other Main Street organizations that do DORA and got lots of feedback recently, went to Greensburg and had a whole presentation on DORA districts with their Main Street, and I think there were 20 other Main Streets there. So we got to kind of hear about, you know, what it is all about. And it definitely is not to have a party in the downtown. It's more of just being able to walk around, be social. Yes, part of our seating in the downtown is that courthouse wall. You'll see during the events that that's where people sit, because that's where seating's available. So again, we did one drink. You can go inside, you can get one drink. You can't walk out with two like normal DORA districts. So it's just all about bringing business to our businesses in the downtown. It's an economic development tool. It's an experience for our guests and our visitors in the downtown and less about a drinking event.
Good. For the questions? Any other questions, comments?
I got a question on section 16, talks about outdoor dining exception. Item C, it says no fencing or other enclosure of the outdoor dining area required. I'm trying to figure out what that means compared... Talks about a designated permit in a DORA, includes outdoor dining, and following exceptions apply.
I think to the extent that certain establishments have outdoor dining areas that could serve alcohol, then that would be permitted to the extent that they're going to, if you're going to get up from the table and then leave, then you... Oh, I don't know, would it be like this, if Clues allows you to sit outside and then have an alcoholic beverage, that would be one of the outdoor dining conception. I think the Chop House would be another. I don't, not aware of any others, or the, the distillery allow you to also?
I kind of think of it as though that if they participated in DORA, they did not have to have another fenced area for them to be in if they were, if it was going to open. In other words, up and you could walk up and down the street. Seems like dining areas ought to be closed off to me.
They would still be required to be. They still would require to be there.
Yeah, I think my understanding, again, of the intent of DORA and how, what we've learned through other municipalities. So if you're permitted to have an alcoholic beverage, let's say in Clues or Chop House or maybe the distillery, I don't know about that one. Sitting at a table, and yeah, you have a beer, you don't necessarily have to have that in a DORA cup container.
Correct.
But if you would choose to leave that area, then you need to have a DORA cup.
Correct.
I believe that's the intent. I mean, we can look at it further its first reading, I think, too.
Dick, I could explain to you, when I was with the ATC for those many years, the floor plans are designated for that particular business. So if they have outside seating, that's still on their floor plan. So that's designated to their business. So you can't carry alcoholic beverages onto their business. But like, when they want to leave, if they put it in a DORA cup, I mean, that should be acceptable. I mean, we can check with the ATC on that. But as far as taking alcoholic beverages into a permit location, you still cannot do that. Is that correct? So if they want to carry their DORA cup and want to walk onto one of these businesses on the outside and go in their floor planned area, they can't do it. Yeah, it's empty, yeah.
What has been your...
Keith had a question. So you want to touch on that? Kind of how the system operates with the stickers?
Not on purpose either.
Yes. So basically, there's a cup, and then each, each cup is labeled with the DORA logo that is branded through each city. And so they have, when they are in the DORA district outside of the restaurant, any alcoholic beverage has to be in that DORA cup.
I'm talking about the stickers on the doors, like how that works.
The stickers on the door, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, there are, in your packet, there should have been logos, and there are logos for street signs, which basically say no alcohol beyond this point, no alcohol brought into this area. And then the other, and then the stickers for the doors, the businesses, the business gets to choose whether or not they want that DORA drink to be able to be allowed in their business. So there's different colored clings for everyone's door, and one says, one will say, "DORA drinks are sold here." One will say, "DORA drinks are permitted inside this establishment," and one is, "DORA drinks are not allowed inside this establishment," basically is what the sticker says. So that business or that building has control over whether or not that drink is allowed inside.
What about in your meetings with other communities that you talk to? What was their comments about the experience of trash, extra trash in the downtown?
Well, there's several ways that some downtown businesses, or downtown DORAs have worked around that. A lot of them, they've not experienced any excess trash. People are pretty responsible with what they've done. Now Greensburg, they print their own, they print their stickers, and they have the establishment of where that DORA drink is purchased on that sticker, so they can kind of track where, if that maybe that cup is left in a certain area, they can kind of trace that back to the building, the business owner, and then you can kind of use that data to say, oh, maybe we need another receptacle here if we see some cups being in a certain area. So maybe if they're in Alley Oop, we'll kind of know where they came from, and then we'll know how to address that. So there's a lot of different things that, you know, the municipalities can use to really kind of track that. But an overall arching theme is it doesn't generate a lot of extra trash. And there's, in our meeting a month ago, there had been no incidences in the Main Streets organizations that were present because of DORA.
And then there's also receptacles at all the exits.
Yep. Yep.
Have you got a, have you got an idea how many new receptacles we're going to need? The city's going to need? Who pays for those? Who purchases those? Who maintains those? And who's going to be responsible for putting up these signs and things like that? Have you thought about that?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, thought about it, definitely. We, I've been writing grants to get some of the supplies that we need for the DORA district. Then also, of course, we're going to need help, you know, from the city for extra trash receptacles. But I cannot say that in our hashtag is outside of the realm of eventually needing trash receptacles as we grow our downtown. I don't think it'll be wasteful to have those trash receptacles. I don't think there'll be tons of waste collection that'll be needed, again, you know, generating that trash. I just don't think it's as overflowing as we might have in our mindset it would be, so.
I appreciate that we've got, that you've come up with a conservative ordinance here, basically, as far as time and things like that go. But, you know, I'm thinking about what's going to be the city's expense to do this. And, you know, I don't mind trying something to see if it works, okay, and so forth. But I'm looking also at, if we have another, if we have an expense, okay? We didn't raise our budget, then we change for next year. It's kind of like, we're frozen. We've gotten, there's no extra money to be planning to spend. I know there's probably not going to be a lot of money, but, but it's like, we don't have a lot of money to spend any extra. You know, we've got departments coming back, wanting additional here at the end of the year to try to finish, balance our budgets and come up. And it's, it's like, you know, we're going to try to spend some money here to do something, you know? And I don't find it concerned.
Well, I don't believe there's going to be a massive influx of people. You know, you implement this for 12 months, probably won't see an influx of people. It's just going to be the local guy just walks from, from, you know, Chop House, down the street, finishes a drink, puts it in the trash can, and goes home or whatever. You know, it's just, it's not, you know, it's not going to be Bourbon Street. So, I mean, that's what everybody thinks. They think, oh, my God, it's going to be Bourbon Street. No, it's just going to be three or four people doing it. I mean, maybe they gross a little bit, and maybe in a year or two, we have to buy two trash cans. I mean, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, and I think it also is a welcoming experience for those communities who are close to our communities that have DORAs and, you know, experience that within their communities like Sinesville and Westfield and Noblesville. They come to our communities, and I think that it just allows them to have that same, that same experience within our downtown. And window clings are not that expensive. Stickers are not that expensive, so.
I actually, when I was there, I took photos of the cups, the plastic cups that had DORA on there. They put signage out on different businesses that says, "DORA, please enjoy, be responsible." It tells you a couple of state statutes about open containers and motor vehicle. They went, as a reminder, they put stickers on buildings that would say, "DORA beverages sold here," to let you know that you're welcome to come in here. It's a DORA accepted location. I took photos of the alleyways. They were so clean, the trash containers that they had. And then they put signs up that gave guidelines on what DORA is, where the limitations were, where you could go, where you couldn't go. And just kind of an update on, on DORA and their small community. I think they had a total of six rules, and it just basically be safe. Here's the rules. And we didn't see anything when I was there for a couple hours, walking around the streets of Noblesville. You had to look hard to see someone carrying a cup, because it's not something where mass people are going to come up and start carrying drinks, going place to place. They're just enjoying themselves as they walk through and visit the city. And that's what I observed when I was in Noblesville.
So at 10 o'clock at night on Saturday night or 9 o'clock, then we're not going to be, if somebody's drunk and disorderly, there's no PIs, no public in talks now in that DORA district? I'm just, I'm just saying.
That would still apply. We're not overriding state statute on drunk public drunkenness. Your comments, questions from council? Any public comment concerning ordinance 2025-41?
Wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't make a comment. Okay, so the DORA was developed for economic development, like Missy said, to increase foot traffic and spending revenue. What shops do we have downtown? And it's also a way to ease of events, simplifying the process for downtown events and festivals. So does that mean every time we have an event or a festival downtown that we're going to be having people that are out there drinking, walking around, enjoying the farmer's market, getting drunk? I think those people want, that farmer's market, want people to come there to buy their goods and not to buy alcohol and walk around. Next thing is, I would like to know what is next that our state legislators are going to pass for economic development? Are they going to start giving public money funds? And are we going to get some adult entertainment centers going in? How about some strip clubs? That's a good way to increase revenue.
Thank you for your comments. Just a public comment?
Hi, I'm Mel McMahon. I own Indiana gift.
I own Indiana Gifts on the Square, 101 East Main Street. Been there almost three years. It's a great little shop, I'd love for you to come see it. I'm also a resident of downtown. And I just wanted to reemphasize that this isn't a tailgate party that we're trying to throw. It's simply letting someone go to Boone County Cake Company, that happens to be across the street from my house, and then let them walk downtown with their drink. Maybe they stop into Ferris Wheel Music Studio and Store. Maybe they stop into Indiana Gifts. Maybe they go to Fire and Firm. Maybe they go to Merle Norman. Maybe they stop at Four Finger. Maybe they go to the distillery that's gonna be open in the jailhouse again. Maybe they go to Clues. We have lots of great businesses in the heart of Lebanon. What day of the week? Thursdays, we're open until six right now because that's when people stay downtown. Friday, we're open until six. Holidays, we have special hours. Sometimes we're open until 9:00 PM. Have you been there?
Ma'am, we can't, we can't have, people watching at home can't hear what you guys are saying back and forth, so let's.
This is a tool to increase our community's traffic, to build our community, to bring attention to our community. It's just, it's just an opportunity for people to have an experience. It's not Bourbon Street, it is just another tool. For example, I had someone the other night that was gonna go to a party at Chop House and they came to my store first. And the guy asked if we had Dora here. And I said, no, not yet. And he was like, oh, okay. And he just didn't stay as long. And, you know, it's just, it's, again, it's just a tool. So if you have not been to a Dora district, I highly encourage you to go visit one, like John did. If you haven't been to Indiana Gifts yet and seen our charming little shop on the corner of Main and Meridian, I encourage you to come in and see it, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I hate to put him on the spot, but County Commissioner Pell is here. I was just wondering, and he's got a big chunk of ground right in the center of this thing. I wonder if you have any feelings or comments towards this.
I remember this happened to me once, I was on the county council.
I hate to put you on the spot.
You have to come up here. Commissioner, we have to, we have dozens of people watching at home, I'm sure, so.
I hate to put you on that, that's on the spot.
Speaking on my opinion, I, I don't see a problem with it. I mean, I'd never really thought about if that was, they're gonna be on the courthouse lawn throwing cups and being vandal, you know, doing vandalism things. But I don't, I don't foresee a problem with this. I don't partake in drinking myself on a very, very, very rare occasion maybe, but I don't have any problem with responsible adults being responsible adults. So that's about my only opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any just public comment? This will be up for second reading at our next meeting, which will be December 8th at 7:15 PM. All right, next item up here will be ordinance 2025 dash, this is 44. This is out of order. This is concerning golf carts, is amending Title VII, Chapter 75. And this is Rob and Councilman Hawkins.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll do a reading in the guts of this, is gonna be in Exhibit A. So this is ordinance 2025-44. Again, it's an ordinance of this council amending Title VII, Chapter 75 of the city code of ordinance. And we just put in parenthetical here, golf carts. So pursuant to Indiana law, this city within the reasonable exercise of its police powers may by ordinance, again, regulate or prohibit operation of golf carts on highways within the city's jurisdiction. This council has previously adopted, as you know, ordinance 2018-19 on July 23rd, 2018, for the purpose of regulating operation of golf carts all in Title VII, Chapter 75 of the city code of ordinances. That's defined as city code. This year on August 11th, 2025, this council amended ordinance 2018-09 pursuant to ordinance 2025-23. Again, this parenthetical, again, we had the scribblers there, we already addressed it in here. And the city finds it's in the best interest of public safety and welfare to amend the golf cart and ordinance Title VII, Chapter 75 of this code to further regulate operation of golf carts within the city. So the council finds that the recitals are incorporated by reference. As of effective date of this ordinance, Title VII, Chapter 75, the city code shall be amended and replaced with Exhibit A, Chapter 75 Golf Carts. The remaining portions of Title VII that aren't impacted by this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. And I'm happy to go through here. There are a handful of pages that are descriptions. But essentially, what we've done here is the purpose of the golf carts is set forth in 75.01. There's definitions in 75.02. The dimensions are new, and that's in 75.03. And there's some pictures in there as well. 75.04 discusses the registration. This is one change. Again, golf carts shall be registered with the city annually and the golf cart owner shall purchase an operating permit each year now from the Lebanon Police Department. And those permits are, will be current through December 31 of the year purchase. 75.05 discusses inspections. 75.06 discusses permitted operations. 75.07 talks about operational requirements. 75.08 discusses the prohibited areas. Again, this is consistent with what we adopted before. But just to refresh everybody's recollection, golf carts are expressly prohibited from operating on any state highway within the city limits, including but not limited to State Road 32, State Road 39. Golf carts are also prohibited from operating on Indianapolis Avenue. As well as operation on sidewalks, bike paths, or other non-street public areas is prohibited unless otherwise designated by the city. 75.09 has a discussion on special events. And then 75.10 discusses, discusses the penalties. So with that, I'll turn it over to Councilman Hawkins, who I know has worked on this as well.
So, excuse me, basically, this is being revised because, number one, we're getting complaints about golf carts on trails, golf carts on sidewalks, golf carts riding across the grass in parks. We needed to get a stop to all that. We want to make sure that now when you go in and take your golf cart in, there are, most of these specifications that we've listed in here are specifications from manufacturers. Now, every golf cart differs a little bit. But in speaking with the city police, to put it in the simplest terms, and I like Major Hood's simple term of, I'm gonna draw a box on the wall. If your golf cart fits inside the box, it's legal. And that, that's kind of to do it. What we're trying to get away from is, just with anything else that is out here that is motorized, people modify them, okay? Ladies and gentlemen, golf cart was designed to go 12 to 14 miles an hour because that's what a golf course said. Now that cities are starting to accept them, and we really, really accept them, we have no problem with them, golf carts have gotten a little more smarter and they've increased the speed to 28 miles an hour. Anything over 28 miles an hour is not a golf cart. And the reason we can say that, because a golf cart is a slow-moving vehicle. That's why you have to have a slow-moving decal on the back that shows that you're a slow-moving vehicle. So if you're going over 28 mile an hour, you're not a golf cart. Unfortunately, people modify these things to go 30, 40, 50 mile an hour. And I understand. I myself am one that has a golf cart that goes 12. It is a hazard out here. I'll admit it. And I don't like it and I have to pull over a lot. And I know Sandra is in the, in the same boat that I am. But they're, they are nice and they're convenient. So we wanted to get this on record, that it's gotta be a golf cart that is regulated to go 28 mile an hour. It's gotta be approved by now the city police, where you used to have to come up and get a decal from Tanya at the clerk's office. Basically, you showed your driver's license, your proof of insurance, and your registration to your golf cart. She gave you a decal, you went out, you put it on anything you want. And how do we know that? Because we have golf cart permits put on UTVs last year. We have never, ever had UTVs accepted until hopefully here later. But we wanted to make sure that now you have to make an appointment with the city police. You have to go up there, they inspect it. Now, I will say this. If you have a modified cart and you take it up to the city police and the city police says, yeah, we'll accept that, that's up to them. We, as the council, are not telling you what is going to be accepted. We write down here in our ordinance what we approve of. But if they looked at it and said, yeah, I will accept this modification, that's per the city police. And then they give this, the decal. The other thing with the decals is people were sticking them all over the golf carts. Hard to regulate that. Because you're like, oh, this golf cart doesn't have a decal on it. Where you stop it, it's on the front windshield. It's supposed to be on the bottom left quarter panel. So on the right quarter panel. They just stick them in different areas. Now, the city police will require you to have that triangular, slow-moving decal on the back of your golf cart and they will stick it right in the very center of it. If it's not affixed to the back permanently, they're not gonna give you the decal. That's just their policy. So that's why we, we did this. And then obviously, too, we want the safety of them not being out after dark anymore. Now, before the public goes crazy on me and says, whoa, Mr. Hawkins, what about 4th of July? There are exceptions to that rule and we have talked about that on that occasion. We will extend the hours because a lot of people like to drive their golf carts to the fireworks show. We understand that. And then also, with this now being a golf cart community, there are people that rent them and they will bring a truckload in. I've seen it, they go to the high school because that's where I work. And they offload them there and you pick up your golf cart. You still have to get a permit for that. You now go up to the city police, get your permit, and it's good for a week. It's not something that you can take and rent for a month or something like that. It's only good for that one occasion. So that's why we have that. But again, this is all about safety. We don't want you out after dark where you're driving 12 mile an hour and you're an extreme hazard to everyone out. So I have Major Hood here, who we spoke with on the, this particular ordinance. And then he helped me out with the other two that we're gonna introduce tonight. But the big thing is, again, safety on, on hours and you have to be a licensed driver. We have too many kids driving these golf carts around town and we cannot have that anymore. So hopefully with the addition of our new city court that's getting ready to come online, he'll be able to start enforcing all the ordinances and stop some of this so that we are all safe. And again, I want to say that 98% of the people that drive these golf carts are law-abiding citizens and they enjoy them to the fullest. Thank you. It's the 2% we're worried about.
Comments from council?
I have a question. Do we have anything in our ordinance that is an age of children to sit on these things?
I'm sorry, to what?
The age of children sitting on golf carts?
Nope, and, and we discussed child restraints on there. However, a golf cart is a unique vehicle where there is no way to affix a child seat to it. Again, just like anything else, this is something where parental discretion and supervision has to come in mind. And I know what you're gonna say, there's people that drive around with kids on their laps. And, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit up here and say I'm a saint, I have done that before. Is it safe? No.
But again, like you said, we decided to leave it up to parental discretion and not, as a government, not tell them what they can do, but let them be the ones that if there is a liability, it's not on us. Because we're not, we're not approving that. They have to be the ones to take that control.
Correct.
Under 75.07, too, Mr. Campbell, we did make a mention that factory seating is a requirement for all occupants with a maximum occupancy of six people. So you shouldn't have an infant near a lap in that circumstance since factory seating is required for the occupants.
Comments, questions from council? Any public comment concerning ordinance 2025-44 at this time? Okay, again, we'll take that up for second reading at our next meeting, which will be December 8th. Shouldn't it be an interesting one already? All right, next up will be ordinance 2025-42. This is amending the Title VII, this is regarding UTVs. Actually, Councilman Hawkins, you wanna kind of introduce this one first, then I'll have Rob read it?
Sure. And, and again, basically because of the acceptance of golf carts, we now have a lot of people that drive UTVs. And in discussing with the city police, we feel that these vehicles are much safer than a golf cart. It's basically a golf cart with a body on it, so they're fully encased. It has more safety features on a UTV. So in addition to your headlights, taillights, turn signals, seat belts, this has full windows, front, backsides, has a roll bar, most of them do. A lot more people are more comfortable with those. And then one of the things that I looked at was, now that we have annexed some of our county land into the city with the LEAP project, there are certain people that had UTVs. We now don't want to make them have to go out and buy a golf cart just so they can drive in the city of Lebanon. They can now bring their UTVs in here. Myself and Dick looked at things of, do they have to be licensed through the BMV? No, if we give them a golf cart permit or a UTV permit, they'll be able to drive their UTVs on the roadway. Now, understand that I think it says it has to have, still have a slow-moving vehicle on the back of it. These are not slow-moving vehicles. UTVs go 30, 40, 50, 60 miles an hour. Basically, you're, you're putting a, a small little car on the roadway. But the thing here is to make sure they're licensed, make sure they're insured, and make sure they follow all the state laws, traffic laws. They will, I don't think we're gonna have any problem with it. Like I say, we have had them driving around town. I've not heard of any problems with UTVs, only golf carts. They're pretty much been law-abiding. So we wanted to include them and be a welcoming city for the UTVs to come in and let them enjoy our city as well.
Do, do, are they restricted to the 28 miles an hour in the slow-moving vehicle sign?
No, because, because they are, those vehicles are designed to go faster. They are basically required to follow state traffic laws.
And do we have a UTV sticker then for those so that the police can tell? How, or they'll know because they, they're the ones that approved it. But do we have a UTV sticker so that Joe Citizen says, okay, well, I see that one and he's going 60 and they're not supposed to go, you know?
Where would be one that would be generated? If this is adopted, then, then yeah.
I'm just trying to make sure we have it distinguished.
Golf cart permits and you'd have UTV permits, they'd be two separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did have a question. Are we groundbreaking, is there other cities in Indiana that have something for, for these particular type of vehicles? I know Carmel just did one on the, the bicycles and golf carts and things, but I've not heard of one, on this particular one.
I think the county regulates UTVs at the moment, don't they? Commissioner? Sorry. Yeah, so. Yes, so the, the county is regulating UTVs. I, I think what other cities, they, sometimes the UTVs fall under the golf cart. The way they write their words, they haven't, they haven't defined them enough that sometimes they use them for both, which is kind of where we've kind of been, where we have this unclear system.
We've found a couple of cities that, and we're talking very rural, that they drive mainly UTVs. They don't drive a lot of golf carts. It's more UTVs than golf carts. This is just another way, another tool to accept, hey, if you want to drive a UTV and some people like them better. Come on into Lebanon. We.
Have ordinances in those other communities for these? That you know of?
For the UTVs, yes.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Copeland, we, part of our research, we located ordinances in Attica, Greensburg and Poseville. Each had ordinances or allowing for the UTVs that part of the draft that we've built has been based off of those.
Questions on this ordinance from council? Actually, I think this is a great cleanup. Again, we kind of have, I know we have the issue now. Obviously currently with our golf cart permits, there's no physical inspection done by the clerk treasurer's office. So. I think some of our golf cart permits have ended up on UTVs now. So I think this is a good kind of. Delineated, make sure that if it's going to be on our streets, it's at least. You know, looked at, make sure it's, it's appropriate. So. Any public comment concerning ordinance, uh, 2025 dash 42? Okay. Again, that'll come up at our next meeting for second reading on December 8th at 7:15 PM. All right. Finally here. Oh, yeah. Excited. Official reading. Yeah, go ahead. I guess we should officially read it. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Council. And I'll hit the highlights because this is, uh, very similar to what we just read in 2025 dash 44. So 2025 dash 42 again is an ordinance of the city. Amending title seven of the city code to add. A new chapter 78 regarding utility task vehicles or UTVs. Again, uh, this council has the authority by Indiana law to regulate and prohibit the operation of off road vehicles. So the city now finds it's in, in the interests of public safety and welfare to regulate the operation of cer- certain off road vehicles. Commonly known as utility task vehicles or UTVs as defined in exhibit A. As of the effective date of this ordinance, chapter 78 utility task vehicles. Vehicles is hereby added to title seven of the city code. And I'll hit the highlights again in exhibit A, but, um, this. And this may need a little bit of cleanup just to, um, mirror what exactly, um, this council wishes, but, uh. In 78.02 are the definitions. And it has in A, the utility task vehicle. As well as the different city streets, state highways, licensed driver, after dark principles. 78.03 talks about the dimensions, but it also has some exhibits again. If the maximum width is going to be, uh, 65 inches, then we'll, we'll confirm that. Before, um, we come before second reading, 78.04 discusses registration. 78.05 again discusses inspection as Councilman Hawkins, um, addressed with the Lebanon police department as well. And 78.06 talks about permitted operation. 78.07 are the operational requirements. 78.08 are the prohibited areas. 78.09 again discusses, uh, special events and 78.10 are the penalties.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions, comments, concerns from council on that? Okay. Again, we'll take that up our next reading or next meeting, December 8th for a second reading. All right. And finally here, we've got ordinance 2025, uh, dash 43. This is concerning e-bikes. Councilman Hawkins, you were very busy. I'll let you introduce this one as well.
Okay. This is our, our hot, uh, ordinance. Cause this is one that everybody's looking at right now. This is. A lot of cities are looking at this because a lot of cities are having problems with this. Again. This is not the 98% of the law abiding people to go out and get an electric bike and ride it on the streets and, and follow all the laws. This is the 2% that are. Terrorizing this city, so to speak. We have problems with them on the trails. Reported. We have problems with them on sidewalks. I know for a fact because I just about T-boned one on my sidewalk, right in front of my house that came flying down. A 12 year old young man. At about 40 mile an hour and never stopped at any. Intersection. I've had him running from the city police at sporting events at the high school and middle school. So they're, they're getting to be a problem. Now. The issue here is. That it is a convenience to get your son or daughter, these electric bikes. To take them out and get around town because parents are extremely busy. I understand that. But we need them to follow laws. Now the difference here is. We ask that you be a licensed driver. Or have a state issued ID card. We want to include in here 14 and 15 year olds. You can go to the BMV and get an ID card at 14 and 15. And I think that's a good tool. For these young kids to start to learn the state traffic laws, start to learn how to actually drive on the roadways. And the, the ID card for. For the purpose of you identifying your age. That you need to be out here. We can look at it further if we want to extend it lower. I don't think so personally. That's just my opinion. But we can obviously look at that. But it's again, another thing to keep them on the streets. To keep them off the sidewalks, to keep them out of the city parks because they go into the parks and they jump hills. And they do everything else and they tear things up. We want them to enjoy them. But we want to, to them to enjoy them lawfully. And now anyone under the age of 18 though. We are requiring you to have a helmet and protective eyewear at all times so that they're safe. Again, safety issues. And then. These are the ones that are going to be, I think the worst of these three ordinances. Because and you can ask any city policeman. You start to chase an e-bike, it goes across the country. It doesn't stay on the street. It goes through, through yards, through parks, through everywhere. And I've seen it firsthand. So we've got to get these ordinances down. We have to get them. On paper. So that we can start enforcing everything. And protecting these young kids. Cause the last thing I want to see. Is to pick up the Lebanon reporter and say. 14 year old was hit on an electric bike racing down the street and disregarded his stop sign.
Will the, will the police be permitting these e-bikes also so that?
Yeah. You have, you have to actually take your e-bike up there to them. They're basically. Going to look at and say, yes, this is an e-bike. Now. As it was brought to my attention, e-bikes come in different classes. What we're seeing though is they're taking these e-bikes. They're all pedal assisted. Even though the, the class three has a throttle on it. You start with a. Pedaling it, then you hit a throttle. The problem is. These middle schoolers and high schoolers have gotten together. And I know because I got them at my high school right now. And they take the pedals off of them. Well, ladies and gentlemen, when you remove the pedals, you've now not, no longer have an e-bike. You now either have a moped or a motorcycle. Cause you're not pedal assisted. And that's, that's where we got to have this ordinance in place to stop that. So that they keep them as e-bikes and they, they ride them lawfully.
There an age limit for e-bike usage, like a nine year old? Can they have any?
Right now our ordinance, uh, is going to permit 14 and 15 year olds with an ID card. Anyone 18 or older, a license or an ID card. Cause that. Unfortunately, there are people that lose their license and they have an ID card only and. Just like a moped, they can get an e-bike and ride that.
Well, 16 years and older need a license or?
We would prefer the license, yes.
But they're nine years old, they cannot ride an e-bike legally. Is that correct?
At this time, yeah.
You ask them as of state law or?
Well, in the city of Lebanon, if, uh, somebody buys their 10 year old an e-bike. Can he or she ride the bike?
In their yard.
Well, in the city street, like you could.
In the city legally, no, because they, they have to have to take that to the city police, get it inspected, get a sticker for it. And then they can, they can legally ride it. If you're got a nine or 10 year old is going to come up there, they're going to, the city police is going to say no.
Okay. So you have to be 14.
14 or older.
E-bike on a city street.
Correct.
Okay.
And if somebody's younger and they've already got that because their parents went up, then it's, it's going to be an issue when they get stopped by the police.
Is there a statute that says that, Rob? I'm, I'm sorry.
If I may, I'll read the ordinance because I think there's a couple of provisions in here, but yes, there is a statute that governs e-bikes. For those of you read the Indianapolis Star, it was a headline article this weekend about, hey, what is the law with e-bikes? One of the things in Indiana code 92111 dash 13.1, which is in this ordinance. The Indiana legislature said electric bicycles are to be regulated in the same fashion as a bicycle. So as Councilman Hawkins and I discussed, uh, the state legislator did set forth three classifications of e-bikes. Types one and two, their pedal assist, they have a maximum, I think it's 20 miles per hour. Where that, uh, pedal assist changes. And then you have a type three, which goes up to. I believe it's 28 miles per hour, goes a little faster, also has a throttle. I know Kevin Krulik, Darren Warren are a lot more of experts in this regard and have done a lot of due diligence with the bike park. This is, um, an issue with several municipalities. There's no doubt about it. It's coming up. With the city of Carmel. Which we've circulated their ordinance. It's, that's been, that was in committee for a very long time going through it. And the city in that case chose to regulate it by classifications. I mean, there's just a lot out here and I know. Councilman Hawkins with Major Hood have been going through and just trying to really get something on the books for the city. At least to figure out, hey, what's a better way that we can regulate it? Our thought was to get something at least in writing and then have discussions. I, I don't want to speak for you, Councilman Hawkins. But we wanted to at least get this before you all to figure out, okay, how do we want to regulate it? Do we want to have it? Go before the Lebanon police department to be registered? We don't do that for bicycles, but do we want to do it for these pedal or these e-bikes? Right? And they, and Councilman Hawkins absolutely correct. It, they have to have pedals, right? That's the, that's by statute. And again, I've learned a lot about it in the last few weeks. There's probably a lot more that we, that I need to, I know, learn. But I think the big thing is getting something. In front of you all, and then how can we enforce it? And then just like a lot of city code, do we need to change it at a later date? Maybe? And again, I'll defer to Councilman Hawkins and you all in the police department, Major Hood. Again, I know Kevin has been back and forth with some other municipalities and really just trying to understand. Do we want to allow these e-bikes on our trails? Again, maybe different types are permitted, you know, if they're. You know, authorized and done appropriately. It's, we don't want to have motorcycles on the trails. I don't think, I, I know Councilman Hawkins doesn't. But it's again, how do we? Put the bu, put the law in the books and then how are we going to enforce it? Right? That's going to be the, one of the issues too. So. I'm, I'm happy to, let me address this. Yeah. Yeah. So again, this ordinance 2025 dash 43. Is, uh, a new ordinance or ordinance adds a new chapter 79 regarding electric bikes or e-bikes. And as I indicated, Indiana code 92111 dash 13.1. The Indiana legislature legislator said electric bicycles are be regulated in the same fashion as a bicycle. And the city finds it's in the interest of public safety and welfare to regulate the operation of e-bikes. And that's all set forth in exhibit A and it's going to be a new chapter 79. And this is again, several pages in exhibit A, but we talked 79.02 talks about the definitions. Of what electric bike is. 79.03 talks about the approved specifications and Councilman Hawkins. Discussed what he would like, at least, uh, anybody under the age 18 would be required to have a helmet and protective eyewear. 79.04 talks about registration of these. And again, uh, uh, that, um. May be up for discussion. 79.05 is inspection. 79.06 is per, permitted operations. 79.07 is operational requirements. 79.08. And you've seen some of these are highlighted, I know through some internal discussions that we had, but is the prohibited areas. And then. 79.09 special events and 79.10 is the penalties. So. As you may know by now, each of these three ordinances, golf carts, UTV, e-bikes are carrying a similar format. You know, with, that we're trying to follow at least to make it. I think is easily to discern and to be able to regulate as possible. But with all that. That's first reading. I don't know.
Any, any council comments, questions at this time?
So e-bike riders will. Be mandated to wear a helmet?
Under the age of 18. So you're 18 or older? No, that's.
What you mean by, what you mean by eye protection?
Glasses, goggles, face mask. I don't know, whatever you'd like. I mean, I've seen kids with full helmets. I've seen kids with helmets and goggles. Sunglasses. It's just like a motorcycle, whatever your preference is.
Yeah, but you don't have to wear a motorcycle helmet by law? Oh, I know, I know. But I mean, it's just seems, but bicycles, I wear a helmet on my bike, but. It just seems like you're carving out this little helmet thing for this little. Age group. I mean.
And, and like we've said though, it, it's something we want to get on the books. Something we want to discuss and we can amend it. I don't, I don't have any problem with that. If we as a council decide that we don't want. To worry about helmets and eyewear, then.
It's the younger ones that don't really know the laws.
I'm all for safety.
Driving, you know, and are abusing.
Kids wear helmets when they ride bicycles anyway. What's the difference?
A lot of them do, yeah. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, just. You know, to make somebody wear goggles, you know?
As long as it's covered by state statute, I'm good.
Does, Rob, in your mind, does this distinguish between the classifications of e-bike or is it treat a type one same as type threes?
Our, ours just basically covers a e-bike in general. And it's, it's more of, uh. Getting it out there so that. They are actually brought in to present to the city police. Say, yeah, okay, this is an e-bike. We see that. We're not, I don't think they're going to sit there and look and say, what class is it? What? No, this is an e-bike. We'll get you a. Sticker for it so that you can ride it. Should prove to me that you're 14 or above or older. So that you can legally be out here on the streets riding the e-bikes.
Does this include the, the little skateboard things that are electric too?
No, we, we did not. They told me, don't even touch the scooters.
Or motorized skateboard.
I guess my question, Rob, I mean, I think there's a pretty dramatic difference though between a type three e-bike with a throttle. And ones that are, you know, the, the pedal assist. It seems like a pretty big. I mean, I know they may look the same. I think there's a very different break there and how they're used. And frankly, from a speed standpoint, I mean. You can, I mean, if you said it's capped at 20. I mean, you can go, a lot of people can go faster on a road bike than 20 miles an hour with no E assist, right? So. Are we regulating speed or regulating? Classification? That's my concern. Cause if it's more than 20, I mean, do we need helmets on golf carts that are going?
You know, a good thing, and I, I didn't know this and it comes from the Carmel one. Kevin sent a card to us that basically breaks down the classes and we can look at that. And, and modify for, for the each class. Yeah.
And I think for class three, that's a pretty serious, that could, that's, that can move pretty quick, right? I mean, that, that makes a lot of sense.
Honestly say, I don't think I've ever seen an e-bike go 20 mile an hour yet.
Yeah.
Meaning they're not that going that slow. They're all going fast. So my question is, are they buying all these kids level three bikes? I don't know. That's something else. Well, like I said, the, the young man that came down my sidewalk. I would guess was running 35, 40 mile an hour down the sidewalk and blew through four intersections that I could see him.
They ride up and down the street I live on and they're just.
Yeah.
Barreling and they're not looking for vehicles, but they're kids. You know, they're kids. So if a parent goes in to, and takes that e-bike and goes and gets a permit. They also need to know that if they're going to allow their kids to drive it, that they have to get those IDs, 14 and 15 for their kids. They have to take them and get those so that the parent doesn't just. Get it and let them go and then, oh, you didn't tell me, you know? So we need to cover that. We're, we're trying to protect the kids.
And, and again, sir.
They're the ones.
You have to start somewhere.
Right.
And I think this is a start. And we can amend it and amend it and amend it. Obviously I want to. I want everybody to be able. Obviously, I want to, I want everybody to be able to enjoy these things. If you have one, I don't have one.
Unless you're under 14.
True, true. But again, where are most of our problems coming from? Kids.
I don't disagree, I mean, I understand the safety aspect, I don't disagree. I just, kids, kids are, I mean, I don't know, us regulating is going to solve this. That's my point. It's like, I just.
I think it's going to help somebody not get hurt.
But I mean, I, I mean, I just, I struggle with, I mean, right now, you're supposed to register your bike too, right? You know, Major Hood, right? We have a, supposed to have a bike license in City Lebanon, I believe, right? How do people get a bike license right now?
Just to take them. And then it went to the street department.
Because, because I'm sure they're flapping out the sidewalks, driving way too fast, riding these bicycles up and driving, you know?
We had to get a tag on it.
And again, it's, it's just an introduction. It's not, not, nothing that's passed yet, and we don't have to pass it.
I, I.
But I just wanted to bring it up. I'm thinking about safety. Coming from a law enforcement background, I see this way too many times. And the last thing in the world that I want to see is one of these kids blow an intersection and get smoked by a car.
Young kids don't know the rules of the road.
I'm sorry, the car is going to win.
But young kids, they don't know the rules of the road.
You're right. How are we going to regulate it? How would, but we have to try something. And again, if it's something where we don't want to entertain right now, please speak up and, and everybody tell me, and, and we will go from there.
I mean, yeah, I just, if there's any public comment, please.
Hit up at once. Hi, I've been waiting a long time tonight to talk about this, everybody. There's a few things that, so I'm, our family's big into biking. We bike all around town. And I have the receipts in case you guys need to see that. Helmets are super important. I understand where you're going. Helmets, very important. This is a cargo bike. This does have a throttle, but it only is at 20 as it ships. People can change that and make it go faster. I, I think there's a lot of similarities you've had with discussions tonight with the golf cart side, but it's not translating into this talk. You know, we're talking about parental discretion for having kiddos ride on golf carts, UTVs. And then we're talking about trying to just ban completely e-bikes from bike paths. Because the ordinance now, I believe, the highlighted portion says, all e-bikes, because they're not separated yet, I know you're talking about maybe changing that, but if it's an e-bike, it's not on a bike path. That's what it says right now. So I do think a starting place is great, I just don't personally really like this starting place. I also think, when you're talking about the actual problem, it's not necessarily the bike. The problem is people's decisions on how they use those bikes, those scooters and things like that. So that does obviously come down to, is a parent going to pay attention or not if they have a 14-year-old that's riding way too fast and not abiding by laws, right? If you're going too fast, which I'm telling you, the East Street Bike Path, you, you can't be going over 10 or 12 on that. It's right next to people's stoops, it's a lot of alleys in and outs. So responsible bike people pay attention to how fast they're going. And the only time I ever touch my throttle is to start my cargo bike, because it's a very hefty load with children on it and with groceries in the back. I don't throttle it otherwise, because that's what the pedal assist is for. So I, I know this isn't a realm that everyone's super maybe used to with the e-bikes, but you're asking me now, if you pass this, I know it's the first reading, but if you continue with this ordinance, I'm now having to ride on the road with my kids on a cargo bike that is already throttled at a certain speed. And I know we don't only make laws for the people who follow it, but I just really would love to have cleaned up language on explaining what the regulation is here. Because the regulation should really, you should consider speed limits on these urban areas. Because, you're right, road bikes, natural cadence, 16 to 20 miles an hour. So if you're saying no e-bikes, but you allow road bikes, and they're going to go 18 miles an hour on East Street, Linear Park, that's not okay. So attack the problem at its actual problem, which is the speed and regulating, making sure that we have regulated rules. And I'm definitely not the professional with how hard it would be to catch somebody who's able to go over hills and things. But I really would urge you to, to research more into the classifications and not banning these things that, like, for some of us, are a way of life.
Where did you say you ride yours at?
Well, we, I ride it to Thorntown, we ride ours everywhere. We just did the witches' ride all the way out to Thorntown. But, I mean, every single day, we are riding our bikes unless it is literally hailing along East Street.
Do you ride them on a bike, or I'm sorry, on a sidewalk?
We do not ride ours on a sidewalk. I, I literally jump off of where Linear Park ends, the bike path ends at the library, to not ride up on the sidewalk by PPM because there's kiddos there. So, but I, you know, I follow the law, because if somebody hits me, it's their fault. So I follow the law. But we have to educate people with what that is, and that's the platform that you also have available to you with this ordinance, is to say, this is the rule. Because this is just the past few years, that we are really seeing this uptick in it, right? So I, you know, having all these little dirt bikes without pedals on them is a nuisance. Helmets are great, you know, but just really pay attention to what you're regulating here. If you're talking about that it's not the government's job to regulate it, and we believe in parental supervision, let's cross that with these bikes, please.
Denise, what type of, so what classification would your bike fall under?
So we have two, shout out to E Boom in Zionsville. But we have a cargo bike, both of them have throttles, and, but they stop at 20. So as it ships, the one we have, a Vinton, it's a common one, as it ships, it's a class two, but it can be changed to a class three. And that would basically, the only way I believe to test that would be to literally get on the bike and throttle it and see if it goes above 20, because ours stops at 20.
So class twos could have a throttle there. It's not just class threes?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So the throttle is a very important piece of language for that as well. Also, just for the importance of a throttle, because we do not have bike paths to all the major areas that, like, our family frequents, which would be from Memorial going over to Kroger, Aldi, or wherever we want to go. If you have to go on the road, a throttle is very handy for safety, because we want to get out of the traffic. So if we are only able to go with, like, my pedal speed, that's natural cadence is maybe 12 miles an hour, but I can turn up the boost, I can use a throttle to get out of those intersections when I'm trying to cross traffic, and that makes it safer. So like, just some food for thought for that, because this would be a very not great ordinance to pass at its current situation.
So are you wanting to be able to ride on the trails?
I want to be on the bike paths that are designated for bike paths with the correct width. No, e-bikes don't belong on sidewalks. Now, I'm not going to lie to you, it's dangerous in some of these areas, okay? When you're, when you're going down, it's a little scary. When I have kids on the bike.
Why is it dangerous?
It's, it's dangerous because people, because I have a four-year-old and a seven-year-old on the bike, my back, my bike, and in a lot of places in Europe, you allow children on sidewalks with bikes, not e-bikes. But you would allow them there, because under 14 in a lot of other countries, that they are allowed because of the safety aspect for them and the reaction time that you have as an adult versus a child, so.
I don't think our trails, Kevin, I don't think our trails are really designed for electric bikes. Aren't they for pedal bikes?
These are pedal bikes. These are with, these are pedal bikes. So you, I cannot ride my bike, my e-bike, without some sort of pedal propulsion.
An e-bike is a bike.
Well.
That's where, that's why this is a really complicated nuanced thing, and it's not an easy. Yes, absolutely, she has pedals, yeah.
To answer your question, our trails are designed for bicycles.
Bicycle.
And for, in most circumstances, bicycles, e-bikes are just bicycles. I, I would echo some of Denise's comments. I think the concerns that I have, that I think a lot of cities had, I, I think, I have not spoken to Mr. Hawkins, but I'm assuming part of the concern is not people on pedal-assist e-bikes, it's the kid on the Siren, which is a brand of, what I would classify, and what, like, Carmel has done, is more of an e-motorcycle. And yes, some kids are taking their pedals off, but you can also buy those from the factory without pedals, with just foot pegs, they're nothing but, they're nothing but an electric motorcycle. And I think that is some of the kids I've witnessed that, as, to use your word, are terrorizing neighborhoods, flying down sidewalks, flying down, you know, through the courthouse square. It's really dangerous. That, that's what I think we should try to find a way to regulate, and I know that's difficult to actually put that into the text. But I think an e-bike is nothing more than a bike that has an accommodation. My, my wife, I think, is going to speak here too. We have a similar cargo bike that we, we transport our, our special needs daughter all over town on. And yes, it's an 80-pound bicycle with a 130-pound kid on the back. We need the throttle to get going so that we don't fall over. But once we're going, we're usually pedal assisting. And again, the throttle can be helpful, getting through intersections, getting out of the way, but I think that's a big difference between, let's say, more conservative lawful use of an e-bike. It's a big difference between that and what some cities are beginning to classify as another class, a fourth class, which is some sort of an e-motorcycle. That, I think, should be on the street, should be regulated just like motorcycles are, to be honest. That's my two cents. But to your question, did we design for e-bikes? I, I don't, I don't really even know how to answer that. We design for bicycles.
Kevin, the, the problem here is, we'll take your bike, for instance, that's shipped at 20, and these are very intelligent kids that knows, I can go to that dealership and I can buy a bigger chip that goes up one, two, three levels.
Right.
Speed-wise, just like a car, you can chip them for, to go faster, and that's what these kids are doing.
Right.
And, and I understand your comments, and, and I, I sympathize with you, but again, I, I'm willing to, to work on this as long as we have to. I don't, that's not a problem. It's not something I got to pass right now.
And I think we all are on the same page there. We, we need to work on this, because it's a very complex issue.
Oh, sure.
And, and I think some of the regulations that other cities are doing is, is regulating speed, which I get, it's an enforcement issue that the police have to take on, that's one more thing. But we're also telling them now that they're, we're effectively creating another vehicle registration system for bicycles. That's a lot for them to take on as well, and to know what they're looking at. And without testing that bike, they're not going to know if it's class one, two, three, or some modified, you know, version. So I think, I think those are things to think about. So maybe more legislating the behavior we want to see from bikes, as opposed to the equipment, maybe, may produce the desired effect.
Sure, I agree with you.
Something to think about.
Sorry. Yeah. Did not state my name and address, so I'm very sorry. Denise Sniblick, 919 Morningside Drive, Lebanon. And just for your car comment, like, we don't, you know, when you're thinking of speed, we still allow people to buy Maseratis, right? Like, they're still buying these cars, but they're regulated by their speed. So just another quick little comparison, even a little Honda Civic can punch it much higher than what our state allows, right? So it's, that regulation is a very important piece. So, sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Ms. Krulik, 303 East Washington Street. And yes, I just wanted to reiterate, I have a class three bike, because I have a special needs daughter who I need to tote around, she's unable to ride a bicycle by herself, and we like to get on our bikes and go. So I need that class three throttle to be able to have her on the back at 130 pounds currently, and be able to take off without dumping the bike and having it being a safety issue for her and a safety issue for me. So as of now, the way that the Monon Trail is written, I can't ride my bike on the Monon Trail with my special needs daughter. So I just don't want to see anything happen like that here. I want to still be able to ride on the trail with my daughter. It's not safe with us in the road way. And so that's just, you know, I wanted to make sure that that's taken into consideration.
And I, I think if regular bikes are allowed on that trail, then the e-bike should too. It's a matter of speed, like they were saying. We have to regulate the speed. But if regular bikes can go on that, I don't see why the e-bikes couldn't. We have to regulate the speed, though. They can't just go zooming on there. And I'm sure the bicycles go too fast too, so we need to regulate that.
John Kim, having been an avid cyclist for a number of years, and also having worked within the cycling industry, and also been an advocate for cycling safety for a number of years, you know, I'd like to share some perspective of maybe some experience from having worked in those various areas. You know, start out, cycling as a whole is just like any other sport, you know, they seem to start these kids younger and younger, and for better or for worse, you know, there are individuals, you know, as sports have thankfully become more accepting, you know, where kids with special needs, you know, kids with disabilities, you know, are able to participate, you know, at a variety of levels because of the e-assist. You know, they might not, they may not compete in the same classes, but, you know, e-bikes have been for a long time, been used as an inclusive tool to allow kids to participate where they might not have been able to previously. And then, you know, as your neighbor, I completely agree with, you know, the statements that you've made, you know, only being two houses down from you. We've seen a number of, you know, bicycles going down at questionable speeds, you know, especially on the sidewalks. And, you know, having personally experienced more than one almost life-threatening, you know, accident while being lit up like a Christmas tree, fondly aware of the regulations, the safety requirements that each cyclist, you know, and, you know, embodies and has to follow as a part of being, you know, a vehicle on the road for all intents and purposes. Those vehicles, you know, these e-bikes should not have been on the sidewalks to begin with, if I understand correctly. I'll yield to, you know, those in law enforcement, but my understanding is bikes are not supposed to be on, on the sidewalks at all. So I guess, you know, in addition to that, if we're really aiming for safety, also being mindful of the lighting requirements to make sure that, you know, young or old, everybody's being seen at all times of day as well.
John?
One other point to the trails, you know, when we were working in the bike industry, having partnered with, so when I worked at the shop on the south side of Minneapolis, we partnered with Southwest Way Park, you know, pretty prominent mountain biking, you know, destination. And there, we never had issues relating to pavement-based trails. One of the more, bigger concerns with the, you know, more dirt and mountain bike trails was the amount of torque that one can generate on the onset with some of those e-bikes. And the reason why that's relevant is the amount of wattage one would have to put through the cranks to be able to essentially do donuts and go mudding for all intents and purposes is, you have to be a professional cyclist to be able to do that. But when you have the amount of e-assist that you do on a dirt trail, especially on muddy days, you know, you can, you can do some pretty decent damage, you know, albeit just one person, you know, and that's obviously detrimental to the public fund, the public use of, you know, those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Any other public comment?
Well, I'll make a comment on the, I'm a cyclist, and I ride during the summer and fall, you know, five days a week, and my normal cruising speed is 13 miles an hour, but I, I top out at 22. And I do ride on the trail, but I don't go that fast on the trail.
Yeah.
Of course, if you go west, it's a lot rougher, you can't go that fast.
Once we get it, fall thick something, like you said.
But anyway, so I, I, I think that by, all bicycles, I, I actually think the e-bikes, they should, they should be able to be on the trail, and they should just be regulated by speed. And, and like Mr. Hawkins said, I mean, you know, eight out of 10 people follow the law, and you got those two others, you know, that may not, but, you know, you, you're not going to stop that person. They're, they're going to do whatever they're going to do, they're, you know, we, we shouldn't try to, we shouldn't punish the masses for just a couple of bad people, or people who act badly.
And the good thing about getting this going too is, everybody's going to be aware, and you can also, like you had said before, the bikes have to ride, ride away to the pedestrian always. So we can make that very, you know, well-known again, too. Okay?
I just want to say one thing. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. And I would like to say that I, for one, have never seen you drive recklessly up to Central Elementary. Because I, yes, I'm really there. But no, like I said, this is a work in progress, and we want to make everybody happy. And, and yes, I want all your comments, I want to know everything. Is it something we want on the trails? Okay, then let's have it on the trails. Again, that doesn't bother me, as long as we are all respectful of everyone else out there, and, and we're doing it safely. We'll work on this as long as we have to. We'll work on this to get it down. It's, this is the hot topic for every city. I know that when Rob. that when Rob, I went to him at first and said, hey, I'm going to introduce this, and he just kind of laughed at me. He goes, you want to know how many other cities want this right now? And they're waiting to see. They were waiting for Carmel to write theirs. They're waiting for us now to write ours, because they know we're starting to write it. So again, this is not something we have to get down on the books right this very minute. It's something I want to introduce, something we need to work on, something we can amend and amend and amend to make everybody happy. Again, I, there are a lot of great kids out here riding these bikes. And they're having fun. And that's what it's all about. It's, I, we got to figure out something for these other 2% that are, because God forbid, I don't want another one coming down my sidewalk, and I pull out and, because I almost hit him.
Okay. So we won't.
We've had, we've had first reading, correct?
We had first reading.
Okay, so.
So, but it sounds like we're not going to have a vote next time. So let's keep having some, so send Rob, send council feedback, thoughts. Everybody take a look at it. Let's, it'll be a work in progress. When we feel like we get a better spot at it, we can bring it back. So, is that fair? Yeah, the e-bikes. Yeah, I think everything else, we're pretty close on, on those stuff. So, yeah.
I have one question. On the, on the UTV, it, it, let's say this passes on December 8th. When is that beginning?
I think he has that in there that it's effective January 1st, to go with the new permit tags.
All right. That concludes what I have for new business. Anything from council?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll move on to claims. Entertained motion concerning the claims.
Motion to be paid to claims.
Mike, should bear bills. There a second?
Second.
Second from John, all fair side.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those claims are approved. All right. Any announcements or discussion from council?
Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
With that, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion from Dick, second from Mike, all fair side.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.